Call to order the regular city commission meeting of April 18th, 2017. May we say it with political allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great liberty which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. Well, we get to start off with a nice opportunity to meet our new part-time officer, Julie Reed. Chief, now what? You're on.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, Steve Gess, and everybody else. Obviously, that you see on number three, Pleasant Ridge Police Department and City of Pleasant Ridge are proud to announce hiring of a new part-time officer. It is the first female officer that the Pleasant Ridge Police Department has ever hired here before.
Excellent.
Since 1928. So that dates back to 1928. So it's been a long time, a long time coming. Just a brief little history. Officer Reed is 28 years old. She was born and raised in the Birmingham area, attended Birmingham Seehome High School, graduated with honors from Oakland University, attended and successfully graduated from the Oakland Police Academy in 2014. She was working since then at the Oakland County Sheriff's Department for about one and a half years in the Court Services Division as a deputy there. We interviewed many candidates, and Officer Julie Reed was our number-one pick. So with that, I will turn it over to her for a minute so you can get to know her better. Officer Julie Reed.
Thank you, guys, for the warm welcome. I'm very honored, very pleased to be a part of Pleasant Ridge. It's a wonderful community, much similar to the community I was raised in. Very happy and honored to be the first female here. Happy to add a different dynamic, a different twist to the department. It's been wonderful so far. Everybody's been absolutely amazing with training and showing me the places and different streets and maneuvers. So I'm happy to serve and protect your community. Definitely, I'm happy to be here.
And you'll let us know if they give you a hard time.
Definitely. Not a problem. Not a problem. If there's any questions, yeah, definitely, you're welcome.
Yes, not once welcoming.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is public discussion. Items not on the agenda. Anybody have anything to bring forward that's not on the agenda?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Gail Gorden, speaking on behalf of the Pleasant Ridge Environmental Committee. We have a hosting -- the Pleasant Ridge Committee is hosting a native plant sale on Saturday, June 10th, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. It's going to be over on -- we had it at the rec last year, and it's going to be over at the new Gainesboro Park this year, right by the DPW building, between Maywood and Amherst on the east side, right over on the east side, for those of you who don't know where that is. This will be the second year we're holding the native plant sale, and we're hoping to make it an annual event. So please, if you are at all interested in native plants, anybody who is interested in native plants, please come. Brendan Nolan will be our host. He was the guy who did our plants last year, and we almost sold out, and it was a bit over 100 people there last year. So we're hoping to do it again this year. Yeah. So that's going to be exciting. Also, the last item is April is Earth Month, as I'm sure you're all aware. This coming Saturday, the 22nd, 22nd, excuse me, is Earth Day. So please, if you -- we encourage you to go out and find an event to attend. If you don't know what events there are, there's a couple right in the local area. Western Market in Ferndale is hosting on Friday night, the 21st, I believe. Is it the 21st, Katie? Do you remember?
Yeah.
I think it's the 21st. They're going to host kind of a family affair down there, so that will be fun to attend. The zoo is hosting an event, as is the Royal Farmers Market. And another good website to look at if you're interested is OaklandCountyMoms.com, and they have a lot of events in the local area. Most of the metro parks are holding something, so it's going to be a really fun day, and I hope it's going to be good weather. And Veg Fest is coming up on the 30th of April. It's a great event. If you've never been to Veg Fest, and if anybody here is a Trekkie, Worf is going to be there from Star Trek. I did not know that Big Man was a vegetarian, but he apparently is. And that's going to be at the Novi -- what's it called? Novi Summer Sec -- no.
X, right.
The Collection over at Novi. And flyers for the plant sale in Veg Fest are at City Hall here and at Four Ridge Road Community Center. Anybody questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Gail. Keith, would you like to --
Hi, my name is Keith Cunningham. I'm president of the Pleasant Ridge Foundation, and I'm just here plugging our annual event. This year is the 57th Annual Auction and Gala, and I hope everyone who lives here got this. Chris talks about the date, which is May 20th, and the fact that last year we were funding the, you know, many of the park projects over on the east side. And this year, the funds that we raise are going to be going to the Four Ridge project. So we hope that people know what is in store from this year, and we're still always going to be open for donations. So if there is people out there who are interested in supporting the community, here's a chance for them to do it, so.
It's a great event. We look forward to it.
Okay.
Keith, question. I heard there's an amazing raffle opportunity available to us. I think it was $100 a ticket, and there was only 200 tickets available.
Yeah, I knew it.
And it was a huge jackpot.
Yes, there is. Thank you, Jay.
Dirty, Sam. Really, Sam. I don't know if there'll be any tickets for my friend or else, because I'm not excited.
Okay. And there's a live auction, a silent auction, you know, the wall of wine. So it's our chance to raise -- we're hoping to raise like $50,000 that will go toward the project. So, anything else?
Last year was a really good year, wasn't it? Really good participation.
Yeah, we had 450 people, and we set a record for how much we raised last year. And we're hoping to exceed that, for sure.
Well, the city commissioner is getting together afterwards to talk about what we're going to donate from the commissioners themselves.
There you go.
And then we'll be talking about what the city is donating later on in the agenda tonight, too.
Okay.
So it'll be fun.
Okay.
And then, yeah, the project that you guys want to fund is very exciting, the park behind the community center, and helping spruce that up to make it more of a --
Yeah, this should be a multi-year project. You know, we'll do phase one this year, and hopefully next year we'll move on to the building itself.
That's very cool. I'll up my bid for the pool chair this year, just to put us over the top.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other items?
Hi, Amanda Krogal. I live at One Amherst over on the east side, and I just wanted to bring up sort of an encroachment issue that we have. I know, I believe Jason has sort of given you a little highlight. I'm right along the alley, as is my family, and many of the cars driving through either to get to the restaurant or as a cut-through, or I assume in the parking spots right there at the dental office and lawyer's office, are continually driving onto our property. They are -- I've put large brick pavers, probably about, you know, this big, stacked up maybe two, three high, and all of those are pushed in, broken. And so, you know, I'm trying to make it safe, you know, a couple different issues. I'm trying to make it safe for my family, especially this one. You know, they're going to have a runner, I'm sure. So trying to make it safe, and just not sure what we can do in terms of landscaping, because we want to continue to keep it beautiful, right? And there's not much we can do in the front yard that's not going to get damaged or ruined. So, you know, I just wanted to bring it up. I'm not sure what my options are here. Wanted to bring it up in a public forum, so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I know, I spoke to Amanda, and I know we're all kind of familiar with her house and that environment there. It really is a high-traffic area. I know we've talked about parking issues there for Whistle Stop, and I feel, I don't know if Jim, maybe you can weigh in on this, and maybe Amanda being right there. Has the parking been better, worse?
It's usually worse in the winter.
Yeah.
I mean, every winter I have to go into Whistle Stop or call and say, "Please remove somebody from in front of my driveway." It's usually every winter. In the summer, it's not as bad, but, I mean, we use the street for parking as well. So, I mean, I know it's all public. We don't own any of those spots out there, but we did have a note on our car one day that said, "Please don't park here," even though it's public parking. So it does get busy. It gets congested. It gets loud, you know, especially super early in the morning, but it's congested.
So the parking issue and the encroachment issue at One Amherst, I think, are all part of the same kind of concern there with, you know, people using the building, the office building, the restaurant. My hope is that maybe we could come up with a solution that is not entirely dependent on, you know, the homeowner, but maybe work with the city on some sort of, you know, way to remedy that situation. I know there's many properties, both businesses and homes along alleys on both sides of Woodward. So I think, you know, there's a variety of solutions. I would just ask that, you know, we investigate and get back to Amanda and Eric and see if there's something that we can do to help out.
Because I do notice throughout the alley, there are barriers, either fences. The house directly north, so right behind us, there's that brick. So I'm not sure, like, you know, what the options are, you know, going down the alley, what the criteria is to have assistance there, or, you know, what my options are. I don't know what I can put there, you know, without breaking any rules here in Pleasant Ridge either, so.
So two things that come to mind off the top of my head on this one is, you know, one, it would be a sort of novel for us to spend money improving a private property to solve this problem. We typically, as a city, don't do that, because it is a slippery slope, you know. We fix this problem, but then, you know, somebody else. Where do you draw the line? So typically, it's the homeowner's responsibility on their private property, but we certainly feel that, I mean, most of the things that homeowners have done all up and down that alley, the homeowners have done. So whether it's the walls, or the big boulders, or the rocks, or the landscaping. Excuse me. But we can certainly talk to you about what the standards are. The biggest concern is clear sight, you know, so that whatever we do needs to be durable, obviously, because it has to stand up to the problem. The only thing is maintaining clear sight for cars coming and using that alley, so that you can see oncoming traffic. I know that yours is probably the smallest pie-shaped front yard, you know, of all those So that's a challenge, but --
And I worry about legal issues. If I put something very substantial there and somebody -- because, I mean, it is hit constantly. They damage their car.
Yeah.
I don't want to be liable for that.
Right, right.
That's one of my concerns there.
Well, let me talk to the city attorney about this. And I think you emailed me today about --
I did, about another issue.
Yeah. So I've got your contact info now. We'll follow up.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we can set up time to --
Okay.
-- run through the options. But, yeah, let me talk to our attorney about liability questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll meet you.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Jean Russell at 65 Devonshire. I'd like to thank the city for taking care of the trees in the berm. I've had a tree that had a lot of dead limbs in it. In fact, one broke off, but they fixed the tree, and I'm so happy, and thank you so much.
Thanks, Jean. Wish they'd fixed mine. We're almost done today. Okay, all right. I'll be back. Talk to the city attorney. Could be a --
Any other items? Public discussion? Okay, we'll move on to the next governmental reports. And we did have a chief here just a moment ago, but I think he went and chased after my wife.
He's making his way back.
Chief, you're on.
I was making sure your wife was okay.
Thank you. I do appreciate that.
She's taking the car. We're giving you a ride in the front seat.
Cool.
You don't have to sit in the back seats. I won't make them wait. City prosecutors, both Eric and Jean Lumber, I should reverse it. Jean and Eric Lumber are here to do their annual, like, state-of-the-city prosecutorial address. They want to touch base and be seen so you know that they exist. They typically don't get a lot of attention like Mr. Neat does, so you're feeling a little deprived, so they're here to say greetings and salutations. So with that, I'll turn it over to them, then I'll be back. Thanks, Chief. You're welcome, sir.
Mayor, members of city council, city manager, it's always a pleasure to be before you, even if it's only once a year. I like to come before you because, you know, you tend to forget somebody if you don't see them very often. My son, Eric, it's right here, who also prosecutes occasionally for the city. My state of the city is very brief. Excellent police department. After 49 years as a prosecutor, I think I know police departments fairly well, and I can tell you that you have an excellent police department, an excellent command, and excellent city manager, who I talk to occasionally, okay? There really aren't any big problems. It's law enforcement. It's traffic enforcement. This city is fortunate. It doesn't have a tremendous amount of, at least misdemeanor crime, the occasional, very occasional domestic, the very occasional transient or vagrant type situation, some drunk driving, driving while suspended, et cetera. I really, I get calls occasionally from the police department for some guidance, and always glad to do that, and always glad that they're calling and asking for that guidance, but they get pretty good guidance from within the city. And usually, by the time they call me and I give them the answer, they say, "Gee, that's exactly what the chief said," or, you know, whatever. Do you have any questions of us? All right. No complaints?
No.
Okay.
No, we are very happy with Jean and the work she's doing for us. Everything's real smooth, real easy.
Thank you.
And always well done, so.
That's great. Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will leave you. Have a nice day. Did not see you next year. We're going to go watch the ballgame. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief just pushed me up just because I wanted you to know how happy we are with Mr. Lumberg and with Eric Lumberg. Just great people to deal with. All the officers are really pleased when we go to court and the work that's being done, and they're always available when we do have questions, and we get them answered quickly. And just a great decision on the city's part to go with them. Yeah, we've watched Mr. Lumberg over at Oak Park for years, and back years ago, I used to, actually, a city clerk will tell you, I'd come over and say, "Is there any way that we could, you know, check into this?" This was years and years and years ago before Mr. Cooper, but just a great job. I wanted you to get you guys to know how much we appreciate him, so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
It's like a revolving door, right? Isn't it? We have a few things, we have a few things go on in the last two, three weeks. You may have heard some of it. On the west end of town, we had a bunch of larceny from vehicles. That was over Saturday, Sunday evenings, March 25th and 26th. All the vehicles, again, were unlocked. I know you've heard me preach, "Lock your doors, please." What was taken was change. Valuables were left untouched, credit cards, phones, keys, things like that, because if we happen to run across this person on the street, we can't prove where change came from or anything else, or tie any items to any particular individual. So the criminal is evolving to the point where he's just taken change. Several residents have security systems, whether it be the doorbell ring type system or something similar to that, or their exterior things. So we were able to catch, capture an image that we have disseminated and hopefully to identify that person. Also, this past Thursday, we had six larceny from vehicles on the east end of town, all by force, all broken windows. They were all Chrysler products. All the navigation units were stolen from those. We weren't the only one. Ferndale had doubled that amount. I think they had 12, all Chrysler products, all similar. So obviously, an organized effort by some sort of crew that come in. Typically, they have people drive around, look for these vehicles during the day, and then another crew comes in and targets the best case scenario for them to pull their crime off or whatever. So again, please lock your doors. If you're thinking about a security system or camera, it helps for us so we can identify people and get that to the other people around, other agencies that we work with to identify these people. We've also seen an increase in scam calls. Many residents are calling about, again, the IRS thing. Hopefully, after today, that will be over. But an elderly resident got a call that her grandson was in jail, and they needed to post $2,000 bond, and she was real close to doing that. But what made her a little hesitant was they asked for gift cards. Nobody's going to ask for bond in a gift card, in two separate $1,000 amounts for gift cards, but she said she was real close, because she thought it was her grandson on the phone that they mimicked a voice, and they knew her name and the grandson's name and everything else. So be wary of that. Today, I received one of those robo-calls, and then a person came on saying that I'm the lucky recipient of a government grant that I never have to pay back, and they just wanted my social security number, and they would send me thousands of dollars. So I said, "Okay, call me back at this number," and they said, "Well, it sounds like a business." I says, "Yes, it is. It's the police department," and they hung up, so. So if you want to use that, although I don't want to get all those calls, so don't use our number. Make a number up. Other than that, that's the latest event. Just lock your cars, please. If you see something suspicious, call. I mean, we're here 24/7, obviously, so please call, and we'll go investigate. Were we doing something else?
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioner, during governmental reports, I wanted to bring up an issue that we're having down at the park in Gainesboro. We've noticed an increase in police calls and the police having to visit the park, especially the basketball court area, for unruly behavior, playing after hours, drugs, urinating in public.
Loud music.
Loud music, chasing kids off the court, a number of different items, and it's become enough that the police have really had to probably put more attention to that area than they should have to. So in, to try to help, I guess, calm this area down, we're going to lock the rim tomorrow. And basically, it's a device that goes over the rim and doesn't allow a ball to go through it, and it's badlocked. So we're going to do that for an unspecified amount of time for now to just quiet the area down, and then we will unlock it in the near future and reassess. We've done numerous things to try to not get to this point where we have to do this, you know, this, try to calm this area down. We do have some cameras, surveillance cameras in the area, seeing if we could see if anybody is having those issues, but, you know, that's kind of like after-the-fact type thing, and it's tough to react to that. So the police, I think, have had six or seven different incidents on that site in the last two and a half, three weeks, is it?
Since like March 23rd or so. So, yeah, almost a month now.
Yeah, so we think that this is going to be a solution for now, and we'll ramp up our other efforts as we go forward. We're going to talk about this at the rec commission meeting next Wednesday to see, get their thoughts on it, and go forward. Unfortunately, this is a few people that can ruin it for the many, but it's become enough of an issue where, I mean, I was down there one day, and I saw some kids, you know, urinating behind the pole, and I said something, and they, you know, turned around and gave me the friendly wave. And I know the city manager saw a kid blow through a stop sign down there, which, you know, that's a crosswalk for people, and he said something to them, and they just, you know, friendly waved and basically ignore you. So I think that this is going to be a solution for now, and we're going to keep monitoring the area and see what happens. I know Shawty, who works over at the community center now, she used to work in Old Park for many years, and they would do this at their courts. They were actually surrounded by cages, like a fence. So they would lock the courts up for three, four days, and it would calm the area down for some time, and, you know, then it will, can build back up. But we're hoping to try to squash that when it happens, so. But, yeah, we're not, we can't build fences around the basketball court, you know, we can't gate off the park, basically. We want people to be able to use the park to its fullest, but we want people to be able to enjoy the park that aren't there playing basketball, that are getting harassed and yelled at, and, you know, many other things that are taking place there. So just wanted to kind of bring it to your attention, so you'll see that. We're going to hang a sign up at the court tomorrow, and, like I said, we're going to discuss it at the rec commission. If any residents want to come and, you know, talk about it or weigh in, you can always send me an email or come to that rec commission meeting, too, so. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Chief?
What I can add is the problems that we're seeing with the groups that are there, the groups that are there are non-residents. And we get calls on loud music and the marijuana smoking. We've issued tickets for that. One of our area youth residents, I won't say where he lived, he was assaulted at the court by a non-resident group of individuals. We've increased patrols there to the point where residents or nice families that are coming from Ferndale to enjoy the park now see such a police presence, they actually felt threatened and profiled by the police presence there. So to try to eliminate the problem, we created some other problems for residents and good families that want to just come and enjoy the park for its general use of what it was intended for. So this, you know, it's unfortunate. I know this happened, it doesn't just happen here. It happens everywhere, or it seems. And this all started when the weather broke. We just started monitoring it. March 23rd was the first incident. But we don't have incidents at like the soccer field or the baseball fields or the playgrounds or anything. It just seems to be centralized to the basketball courts right now. So like Scott had said, we put some measures in place to try to monitor it, increase patrols and everything else, and we're going to try this for a little bit, okay?
Thank you.
Well, it makes it particularly tough now with the new design, that we've got people walking, and the danger of people.
We've ensured curched traffic, so it makes sense that you just have to learn how to manage.
Yeah, so hopefully, you know, this will send a message that we're, you know, we're serious about people's behavior on the basketball court, residents, non-residents. I don't care who you are. If you're in the park, you're going to behave, and, you know, behave so everybody can enjoy the park. And, you know, I mean, it's a beautiful park, and, I mean, people are using it like, it's crazy. I mean, there's just so many people down there. I've been down there like the last week and a half, just, you know, getting things ready for, you know, this onslaught of people, and it's already happened. I mean, there's people there every day. There are new chairs and tables in the heart of the park area. People are using them constantly, so we want to make sure people are enjoying the park and using the park and can, you know, take their families there and have a good time. And that includes playing basketball. I want to be able to have that be part of the park, but I think this has become where it's over the hill, and we have to kind of take those people down and see what happens, so.
And being new, if we don't try to nip this problem in the bud right now, it's just going to digress. We had problems like at the old Roosevelt School at that part, to where we eventually took it out, where there was gunshots there a few years ago, if you remember. So, and being in a residential neighborhood, we can't have that sort of behavior, so try this.
Yeah, I was, a long time ago, it -- Yeah, I was, a long time ago, in Easy Troy Kennedy Park, I mean, there was shots and multiple shots fired when kids were out there playing, and I was out there playing that day. And it's scary, and we don't want that. We don't, I don't think it'll ever get to that point, but I don't want that at our park. So want to make sure that it's a safe area for everybody.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Scott. I'm trying to remember back a few years ago, didn't we at one point have the rim lowered to a point where the serious players didn't want to be there?
Yeah, we had the rim lowered, and that rim was not a high-quality rim or backboard. We actually talked about that today. If we were to lower the rim that's there, I don't think that that would move away any players. I think it would maybe bring more players in that could realize, hey, maybe I can dunk on this rim now. That's, it's a nice rim, it's a nice backboard, which, you know, that's what we wanted to put in. I didn't want to put something that's second-rate into the park. So I just think that this is the way to go. We monitor it, and we, hopefully, once we pull it off, it can stay off.
Mayor, if I could just add, I know this has been an issue. You mentioned the incident at Roosevelt. Since I've been involved with the recreation department, the issue of the basketball, the availability of the basketball courts has always been an issue. I have been wanting to and will commit to whatever I can do, whatever a group of citizens can do, to help assist our police officers, our city staff, to make that a functional spot for not only our residents, but just kids in the area who want to play basketball. Because I feel that, you know, playing basketball, you know, we've talked about being kids, being a young man, a young woman, I mean, kids love playing basketball. So being able to provide that in a safe setting where we're not inviting the wrong element is a challenge. It's a big challenge that I know we've been dealing with at the recreation department and the police officers have been dealing with for longer than I've been here. So it's really frustrating, it's disappointing that it's come to this, because I know a lot of kids were looking forward to having this rim up and available. I've had a discussion with my kids about how you behave down there. I know there's been some issues about use, you know, after sundown and stuff like that, and the rules are there for a reason. So having those conversations in our own households about how we conduct ourselves in the park, if we're having situations where people are coming from afar, other communities, you know, that's a little bit more difficult to manage. So, you know, I appreciate the sensitivity of the issue. I mean, my kids are down there all the time. I don't want gunplay. I don't want people feeling threatened or unsafe. So, you know, I understand, you know, the requirement to limit access at this point. I just hope that we can come with all of us kind of thinking about it, how we keep that rim open.
And I think that's why we want to do this now, before we get into the summer season, and it's like, okay, if we act like this, this is going to happen again. I mean, that's really what, the message we need to get out there, that we're taking serious the behavior on the basketball court and in the park as a whole. And, you know, that's something I take very serious, and I want, you know, I want the park to be safe for everybody. So I appreciate your comments, and I, listen, I want the courts to be open. I want people to be able to go play basketball too. It's, I played my whole life, and it's a great sport, but it's, it needs to be done in a park setting a certain way, because in that park setting is when it can get blown way out of proportion, and people's egos and testosterone and everything else comes into this melting pot that can get ugly.
No, I think this is a good first response, and hopefully, people will see the, you know, get the message that it's their direct actions that have caused this. It's not, it's not the city just deciding to shut things down.
Right, right.
I can kind of get the feeling that this is going to take several times of locking it, I would guess. Who has the ability or the access to just lock that? Can a police officer just respond, there's a problem, it's being locked right now, and it gets locked?
Again.
And this just went in, it's going in tomorrow, it was just, the device was just purchased. And with that being said, I know, or you're going, Mr. Kriziek, with, I think at the recreation meeting, I think we can all come together and with ideas and everyone else to try to, I'd get the sense of like a hall monitor thing at the park type thing. But the concern then would be putting a resident in the position to act as the police, and then they get in a bad way. If the police are limited, you know, to responding, if we're tied up on something or something else, then I'd hate to put a resident or a parent, which you would do anyway if your child is there. However, if we get into that light posse type situation, it'd just be bad too. So I think we can discuss all those things at the recreation meeting.
Right, which, there will be some additional cameras going in in that area and an emergency phone, so you'll be able to push the button, and we'll call 911 if anybody runs into an issue. So that'll be all happening in the next couple of days.
That's good.
When is the next rec meeting?
Wednesday, week from tomorrow. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Wednesday, April 26, 7:00 p.m.
Yes. April 26.
You shouldn't want me to leave.
I'd never.
I'd go on forever.
No, we'd love to have you just.
There's, oh, what I forgot to men, no, it wasn't in. See, I podged us. What I forgot to mention earlier is there's cake and refreshments for Officer Reed in there, so everyone's a lead. Cake and everything, you're welcome to the police department.
Are they still going to be there when we're done?
I don't know, look at this group, there might not be any. There might not be any. I'll put a piece away, Cora, how's that? Okay? But everybody's invited for cake and refreshments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll move on to the next, to City Commission liaison reports. Commissioner Scotch, historical commission.
Just a quick one to remind everyone, we have our home and garden tour scheduled for June 10th. I believe we're up to seven homes as of tonight, and should be a wonderful event as it is every year. Looking forward to see everybody out on the sidewalks and enjoying the neighborhood. I think that, is that the same day as the environmental sale? So you can buy plants and look at our beautiful homes and enjoy people's gardens, all on the same day. The other thing I'll mention is if you've not had an opportunity to take a look at our police booth, please do so. The gardening around the booth is being spruced up. It's really beautiful over there right now, and it's just a nice place to just check out and enjoy. That's all I have for today.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Kriziek, recreation.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. As we've discussed, we'll be having our quarterly recreation meeting next Wednesday, April 26th, that'll be a lot to talk about. So as been emphasized, if you would like to weigh in on the basketball court issue, the upcoming pool season, or any other issues regarding or related to recreation in the city of Pleasant Ridge, please put that on your calendar. Some upcoming deadlines, I know, we talked about the May 1st is the informational meeting for the swim team.
Right, the parent.
The parent meeting.
Yeah, the new swimmers, 6:00 p.m., returning swimmers, 7:00.
Yeah, so the swim team's always, you know, a lot of fun and a source of pride for this community. So if you're interested, returning parent or interested, please put that on your radar. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Foreman, Ferndale Public Schools.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would start with something I mentioned last month. Last month, I said there was an open seat on the Ferndale school board. That seat has been filled by a district parent, Sandra Dukey is her name, and she had a conflict with last night's court meetings. I wasn't able to meet her, but she has definitely started her renewed role. Next, an update on the Ferndale District Superintendent search. As I mentioned last month, Superintendent Blake Pruitt will be leaving us. The district would like to have the next superintendent in place by July, and the search process has already begun. They would like our input on what we are looking for in a superintendent, what types of abilities, what types of experiences, what types of approach we'd like to see in that next leader. So there are some upcoming meetings that we can attend to share our opinions. The first is tomorrow night. It's at 7:00 p.m. at the Tri-County Education Center, they call it TCEC, it's formerly the Grant Building. The address there is 21131 Garden Lane in Ferndale. The next meeting, or second meeting, is Thursday, the day after tomorrow, April 20th, 7:00 p.m. at FHS in the auditorium. That's 8A1 Pinecrest in Ferndale. If you're unable to make it to either meeting, you can also do a Survey Monkey, and, you know, it's not necessarily the same as being there and saying whatever you want to say, but it's only 13 questions. Some of the questions are free-form text, so you can kind of put in whatever you want. Some of them are multiple choice also. I think, I looked at it today, and it's actually a pretty good survey. So if you're not able to attend the meetings, please consider filling out the survey. Next is an item that's coming up very soon. It's going to take place April 24th at the Loving Touch. It's another kind of benefit, like we had one a month or so ago, it was the touring cast of Phantom of the Opera. They did something to raise money for the schools and for Broadway Cares organization, which fights, helps to fight AIDS. So this next item is going to be very similar to that. It's going to be cast members from the touring production of Motown the Musical, and that happens to be coming April 18th through the 30th at the Fisher Theater. Well, the cast of that will be performing, as I mentioned, at the Loving Touch in Ferndale on April 24th. Doors open at 6:00 p.m. It's an 18-and-over event, $25 per ticket, and this will benefit Ferndale, I'm sorry, not Ferndale, I've lost the name of it, Broadway Cares, the organization that helps to fight AIDS, and it will also benefit Blessings in a Backpack, which is the program that's going on in our district to send food home for kids who maybe don't have adequate food at home. So very worthy cause. If you'd like to get more information on this, you can look at broadwaycares.org for more information, or blessingsinabackpackmi.org/ferndale. That's information on Blessings in a Backpack program itself. The last item I'll mention is that the next school board meeting is coming up May 15th, 7:00 p.m. at the high school.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, thank you. Commissioner Perry, planning, DDA.
Thank you. The DDA met on March 27th to approve some facade improvement grants for some people in the, some businesses in our DDA who applied for them. There were two that were awarded. One was to 236, what is it? 23634 Woodward Avenue, to help with window replacement, to help improve the facade. And the other was a general facade improvement update for 23675, that cool little building right next to the gas station. And so, and they, you know, and I mean, these were really beautiful ideas that the people brought forward and had well planned out. And so the commission was excited to approve both those. Another one is possibly in the works coming up. The next meeting of the planning commission, DDA, will be held on April 24th at 7:00 p.m. And we also want to thank Loa, or Lauren Christensen, for all of her work on the DDA. She really helped, she was the first business owner who is a non-resident who sat on the DDA and planning commission, and she did an outstanding job of helping bring her energy and enthusiasm and ideas to the board every time. So thank you. Her business is moving, so she is, she's moving on. So, thank you.
But she's just down the street.
She is just down the.
Is it Fernandale, down in Ferndale? She's in the back, so just go around the back, and she's very happy, or she is. She doesn't have the ownership responsibilities anymore, so she's feeling good. Any other questions, Ferndale? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have five items. I just want to, as is my way, I wanted to read, we have one resolution, the rest of them are pretty basic kinds of things, but we have a resolution recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week, which is May 1st through May 5th. And I just, it's a brief resolution, so I thought I'd read it real quickly, because if we don't recognize the teachers, I mean, what are we going to do, right? Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely different backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teacher in educating the children of this community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pleasant Ridge City Commission proclaims May the 1st through May 5th, 2017, to be Teacher Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that the Pleasant Ridge City Commission strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. So just wanted to make sure we read this. So I'm going to ask if there is approval for the consent agenda. Your honor, I move the consent agenda be approved. Is there support?
Support.
Any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I'm reading that.
You're welcome. May we have a vote?
Question, Perry.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman.
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziek.
Yes.
Motion carries. They don't have an easy job, so.
No.
Okay. The next item is 2017 Pleasant Ridge City Commission Goals and Objectives. Jim?
Yes. Each year, the city commission reviews its goals and objectives for the following fiscal year. These are used to inform the budgeting process as we prioritize where to spend our limited funds and which projects to emphasize. It has evolved over the years. This year, the major changes occurred in the item D, to maintain excellent parks and recreation program, with the Gainesboro Park project getting to the point of wrapping up Phase 1, and the remaining projects in there being programmed and slated for future completion. That item, under the objectives and the Parks and Recreation Program goal, was changed to improve the park space behind the community center, which is what the foundation is helping, in fact, leading with the city on improving that space behind the community center and trying to turn that into something that's a multi-generational gathering space, that supports the gathering and congregation use of the building, and will provide some extra outdoor space to support the indoor large room facility and just really a nice place to hang out. So that's an exciting project. That's the major change in our goals and objectives for the year. These are in the budget each year. They're also posted to the website. They're in the packet if any resident wants to have a look. Bless you, Chris.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion for Jim?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I know we've talked about a lot, we've talked a lot this evening about parks, the issues at Gainesboro, the successes at Gainesboro, prospects for another incredible improvement over at the community center. So I think D, in our goals and objectives, really encapsulates a lot of accomplishment, but also enthusiasm for the future going forward. I know last year, at this time, we had, number one was the Gainesboro Park improvements, and obviously, there was a lot of effort and blood, sweat and tears to get that to the condition that it's in. And I think now that the weather has broken, people are really overwhelmed with the space. So that was an objective that was clearly accomplished. But as far as long-term improvements to the Gainesboro space, you know, there still are some things over time that we'd like to accomplish. So I know this wasn't included, and there is no mention really of Gainesboro under letter D. And I was just wondering if there was any way we could include Gainesboro, or if Gainesboro is just something that is taken as a given as far as continuous improvement over there or future improvement? Do you think there is a need in this particular document to include specifically, call out continuous improvement at Gainesboro?
Well, this is the annual goals and objectives. So this year, we know that our focus is going to be completing the project that's there, but shifting our focus to the community center, and that's our focus for this year. I would say next year, you know, we'll be back to where, okay, now what? What's our next focus? So in terms of specific focus areas, this is really the annual goals and objectives, not the multi-year. So I think that's why when we were reviewing these and as a group kind of putting together, that's why this changed from the focus from Gainesboro to the community center.
Okay.
In future years, you know, as we figure out what our next big project is, you know, there's, again, we talked about the pavilion, we've got some other projects over at Gainesboro that kind of slide in, some of those, you know, spaces to be harvested there, then, you know, that can slot back into the goals and objectives for that budget year.
Okay.
So that'll be my response to that. There's nothing that says you can't put something in here, but for the reason for why there's not something to Gainesboro specific, I would say that I think that's the thought process behind, you know, how we, the group, got to this point.
Okay. Thank you.
I promise we will not forget Gainesboro. But, you know, I think I said in my comment that, you know, let's live with it for a second. summer. Let's see how this, you know, it's a lot of, a lot that we'll be learning this summer while we play, you know, doing all the work, so.
Well, the basketball, I mean, we just, the basketball court is only one issue, you know. You know, there's some other issues over there. So, I appreciate the fact that this focuses, focuses our attention this year, and then if we need to readdress it a year from now, I'm comfortable doing that.
Okay, good. Any other comments? Okay. Is, is there approval for the commission's goals and objectives?
Mayor, I move that the 2017 City of Pleasant Ridge City Commission Goals and Objectives Statement be approved.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Pupiel?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Matz.
Yes, Broadway Cares. Now, something exciting, the Iron Ridge LLC Brownfield Development Plan Discussion.
Thank you. This is indeed an exciting project. And for anyone who hasn't yet heard of this through the grapevine, or from your neighbors, the Iron Ridge Project is centered in Pleasant Ridge on the former Walker Wire and E-Prize sites. Tonight, we will be doing a introduction to this. With us is the development team, who I'll let them introduce themselves. I'm going to turn it over to them here in a second, for them to go through the project overview and environmental issues portion of this introduction. And then I'll walk you through some of the brownfield plan issues. Being an old industrial site, being a railroad site, there are a number of environmental issues that exist over there. And brownfield tax increment financing is a tool that the city can use to assist the redevelopment of qualified brownfield facilities. Facility is a term that's used in state law. You have to meet certain criteria. When you're a facility, you become eligible for brownfield incentives. And there's some other incentives that the state can offer, most of which are not applicable in Pleasant Ridge, because we are not identified as a core community. The state actually went through and identified what the core communities are, typically older, more industrial, older cities and suburbs. And we don't qualify for a lot of those. But nothing is being asked of the City Commission tonight. Brownfield financing is something that, if you haven't gone through it before, it's a little bit daunting, get your arms wrapped around. We're introducing this to you tonight to start the conversation, potentially at the May meeting, is I think what the development team is targeting, is to bring this back to you for action on the brownfield plan. And the process for this will be Oakland County will be actually approving the brownfield plan. You have to have a brownfield redevelopment authority to do a brownfield plan. We in Pleasant Ridge don't have one, because we, just 95% residential, we don't have a lot of brownfields. So we're using Oakland County for this. But we do need to authorize Oakland County to go forward to approve the plan, so we do review the plan first. So I'll take you through more of the process and how tax increment financing, how that works. But first, I think I'd like to turn it over to the development team to give you the overview of the project, which is really quite transformative, quite transformative from what exists there today to what could be, and then also just kind of what the environmental issues we're dealing with are. So, I'm not sure who's going to take the lead, but we've got a clicker for you, and let me click over to your presentation and get you teed up here.
All right, great, thank you very much. I'm Dennis Griffin, with Iron Ridge Holdings LLC. And we've brought a team of experts with us. Just a quick introduction, it's our, my business partner, Craig Singer, with Milford Singer Development. We have another business partner, First Holdings and Sills Management Company, who's not here with us tonight. We know that we've got space issues as well. We've got Elizabeth Masering with PM Environmental. She's our technical consultant. Some of these things, we just haven't encountered before, so we want to make sure that we're carefully navigating these items, you know, for the good of everyone. We've got Dan Guff with the DEQ. And he's, you know, with the state, they encourage developers to literally attack some of these projects and get through them with a systematic approach to put them back in productive use. We've got some of our operating partners, we've got Tark Heine with Craftwork. Their business is a manufacturing of brew equipment, and they sell across the entire United States, are one of the largest in the country. They've been helping us guide some of the development attributes from like a best-in-class type of developments that he's seen from placing his product in developments across the country. And along with him is Andy Kuhn, who is one of the original, I guess, ambassadors of this project, and first bringing this project to life. You know, he's very passionate about the community. He's, he's a very talented brewer and a talented business person, and we're proud to have him, you know, be a part of our team as well. You know, I'm a resident as well, and my wife and I are generally a little bit shy. But he's helped us meet a lot of new people, and it's really been exciting for us. Quick history on this project, and really ourselves, we're, I was brought up as more of a corporate developer and corporate broker. And over the last few years, I've, you know, got a passion for literally redevelopment of vacant and underutilized projects. For the last few years, we've done a lot of projects in Royal Oak. A couple examples that you may be familiar with, we renovated the old Royal Radio at Main and Farnham. We renovated a site where there's now Genesis Credit Union and our office. We renovated a building on Lincoln, which is now a brewery, and it houses Ford and a couple other tech companies. We're working on some projects along with our partners in an area in Ferndale, which we kind of, you know, categorize as an Iron Ridge District in a very, you know, favorable way. It's kind of the area which we say is from 696, that tracks Nine Mile and Hilton in a loose definition, is kind of part Ferndale, part Royal Oak, part Hazel Park. And we just come up with, you know, Iron Ridge as a district. And there's really some wonderful people over there, proprietors that have been there for a century in certain cases, and new companies. And we've kind of been, you know, approaching them and saying, you know, what do you think about this idea of a district, of coming together? And the feedback has been phenomenal. So, you know, we've got people coming together, talking about, let's clean up the buildings, let's light the areas, let's play some art, you know, you'll see more flags flying over there. Just simple things where people are starting to get activated. The projects we're talking about today, they were heavily utilized over the last few years, but just not very much exposed properties. You know, Walker Wire was there for decades. It's a huge site, but it wasn't a place where people would come and visit. You know, they were just drawing steel. It was exciting for the workers, but not exciting for the community. E-Prize did a wonderful job coming into the 404 building and renovating it. And they grew so much and were so successful in that location, they grew out of the space. They're now in Southfield. So, you know, it took us literally seven years to assemble that site. And then we first introduced the whole idea as a concept to Jim in October of 2015. And so, this culmination of the presentation today is a lot of work and a lot of planning, and, you know, trying to be thoughtful with this project and understand how can we collectively, you know, convert it into something that's, you know, good for everyone. You know, we're business people, we want to, you know, we, we support our families from our business. We expect a lot of people to support their families from putting business in our spaces. So some of the taglines we have at Iron Ridge Marketplace is what the area we'll talk about today is like, Forge for Food, Family and Fun. You know, that type of thing is kind of a theme, you know, to just, to get the appropriate energy and, you know, kind of culture, if you will, over there. So this is a true mixed-use project, where there's industrial uses, there'll be office uses, there'll be entertainment uses, and housing uses, along with public infrastructure. The Bermuda Street is the formal bike path for Ferndale to connect to Royal Oak. Another one of our projects, we worked with Ferndale, and we put a bike repair station in front of our building. So that type of thing can continue to activate in that area and Iron Ridge District and Marketplace. That was a mouthful. It was, I promise you, it wasn't scripted, it's just, we have a good passion for this and a very good understanding, and we feel blessed to have this type of community and, you know, hopefully, you know, continue to earn your trust and support, and attack this together. It's not the easiest thing in the world to go through brownfield redevelopment. It's not, but it's fulfilling, and it's, you put places into a different use and different field. You talk about the Gainesboro Park, you know, it's, you talk about getting, you know, overwhelmed with activity. And I think that's kind of a great theme of, you know, taking spots that are there and kind of underutilized, and activate them together. So with that, I'm going to turn the, kind of the technical side of this over to Elizabeth and have her kind of describe, you know, some of the processes that we have to go through, and to show you some kind of before and after type of concepts of the whole project.
Evening.
Good evening.
All right. So actually, with this, I'm just going to more provide the visual aid to the description that Dennis had given of the current site conditions, if you guys aren't familiar with it. The entire project itself encompasses 23 parcels outlined in the map up there. They do encompass the former Walker Wire Building, the former E-Prize Building, as well as some smaller previous tool and die shops along Bermuda that technically sit in the city of Ferndale. The line straddling the Walker Wire Building, right down the middle, is the boundary between the city of Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale. And so, part of looking to Oakland County to help manage this is due to the joint jurisdictional component as well. So this is kind of a brief overview of the previous uses on the site, and, you know, just to pull out a few of them. You know, you have the former Walker Wire, you have former manufacturers, you have former warehousing and storage space, as well as hazardous material storage, all scattered throughout primarily those industrial buildings. The proposed project overview and what they're envisioning for the site encompasses approximately 231,000 square feet. That's a combination of reuse of space, as well as the new construction. And those, that's primarily along the easternmost boundary within the city of Ferndale. But collectively, that campus will include tech office, professional office space, they're looking to bring in a fitness center, as well as commercial and retail uses. Upon completion, it's estimated that the entire project, and to transform the entire campus envisioned, will cost $25 to $32 million of private investment. That's just a brief overview of the entire, the site in its entirety. And a layout of where they've started to really cultivate businesses and tenants to fill, start filling in those spaces, and envisioning how that space is broken out, which is further outlined in the brownfield plan that we'll be looking for you to potentially make a motion on later in May. Some former exterior shots, just to really bring it down to ground zero on what is at the site at current, and what the former operations and former industrial use, the condition that the building has been left in. And then on the other side of that, what they're hoping to bring the site to. And that's kind of a good kind of culmination of the current versus proposed. And then I believe the two top photos in particular outline kind of the brew pub component of the project that would be within the former Walker Wire Building itself, as well as proposed new construction of residential apartments along the east side of Bermuda. And so, kind of how Dennis had alluded to, we've been with this project, you know, since 2014, 2015, and looking at various iterations on how to tackle what we've identified in terms of contamination at the site. You can tell just by the number of dots that you see up there, how many soil boardings we've conducted to really try and get a handle on what's out there, what needs to be removed and what needs to be mitigated to allow for a commercial space, or to allow for an office space to, to fill those spaces in the future. And this is just the, the assessment work that we've done on the 404 building in particular. And what we've primarily found out there is PCB contamination, which is a federally regulated substance. It requires input from the EPA, it requires the developers to submit a work plan to EPA outlining how, how they plan to address it, and how they plan to either remove soil, lay down vapor barriers, and ensure that anyone occupying that space moving forward is safe and isn't exposed to any contaminants at hazardous levels. And that's kind of where the component of brownfield tax increment financing comes in. When we look at the project alone, we kind of have, you know, approximately $30 million investment, and when we break that out, you know, nearly $6.5 million of it is related to cleaning it up, taking care of proper demo, taking care of proper asbestos abatement. And to kind of break that out a little bit further for you, when you look at a site, when developers look at a site, they look to maybe around $50, $50 a cubic yard to dispose and transport soil, get it off-site. When you're looking at soil that's contaminated with PCBs or regulated substances, that number could be threefold, 150 to 200 a cubic yard. And so when you start looking at that, and you start looking at a project of this magnitude, costs start to add up. And like I said, this is a project that we've looked at various tools, we've looked at various ways on mitigating it, and kind of what you have in front of you in the brownfield plan that's been proposed is, is what we think is the best, best way to push forward to ensure that we are cleaning that up, and we are mitigating exposure, but then also allowing, allowing the development to financially make sense. And then with that, I guess I just, I would like to further break out that it, since it is split between Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale, what we'd be looking for consideration for on your end of things is further split out between a $2.5 million reimbursement request. It's split between a joint approval from both the local level and also the DEQ. So that's split out between local and school. This isn't a form of an upfront grant, this isn't just a blanket statement number either. This is something where unless the investment happens, unless taxable value, the property rises, there's no, there's no value to, to the brownfield tax increment financing. This is all backend developer reimbursement, assuming that they go forward with the development and it comes to fruition as they've envisioned it. And it's a request, and it's a proportional payback estimated out to approximately 26 years. With that, I'll turn that back over to Jim. Add to.
Did any of you have any questions for this, with any of the development team on the proposed development or the environmental issues, before I flip over to the rest?
No.
Okay.
Excuse me. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just, this is just curiosity, or to help me get a better grasp of what will take place. What was E-Prize doing that didn't require the investment in the mitigation or the abatement of the property that Iron Ridge is proposing?
I think, I don't know exactly the history of it. There's, there are different stages of diligence when people take on properties, and sometimes there's stages of ignorance, not as a negative term, they just don't know. So, you know, we get cues when we look at properties from experience, you know, railside properties are very subject, or suspect for PCB. You know, the rail lines themselves, it was, it was not that people were doing anything bad or malicious, they just dumped things off from rail lines as a normal course of business. Those, those spaces, there were rail spurs at the end, so that would tee us off. And, you know, without knowing to actually bore a hole in the soil to look for it, it just may have never known. So, but once we're aware of it, you know, it's our obligation to attack it. So, there was nothing wrong that they did, and when we found out together as we were purchasing the property, we're like, okay, well, take care of it for the future and take care of it for the past. And I say that, it's very important, because a PCB type of contaminant, it's a personal liability to the property owner. So, someone in the past could be tapped and say, hey, remember this, or you're... So someone in the past could be tapped and say, hey, remember this, or you're liable. So we, we take it and so everyone sleeps better at night, including the prior owners. So it could have been, you know, I don't think there was anything malicious or intentional, just, they just didn't know. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, it is. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I just, I know it was being utilized and there was a very detailed history and I appreciate the time it took to compile that history. It must have been, you know, quite, you know, rigorous at times. I mean, going back to the 50s and the 1920s as far as occupants in all those buildings, it was very interesting just from a historical perspective. But yeah, I was just curious, as the most, one of the most recent occupants of that space, what they were doing and then transitioned to what is being proposed by Iron Ridge, you know, what leap was taken to, to require the involvement of, you know, the DEQ and, you know, the mitigation plans?
Sure. And from a layman's perspective, like the PCBs, for instance, that's something that you have to be very close to or ingest or be touching. So anyone that was there prior, it's, it's deep in the ground. So we're going to be doing construction activities, it will be disturbed necessarily. So we have to be very cognizant of that in our due care plan. And when we're disturbing it, we want it out of there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that answers my question. Thank you.
It's a good question.
Okay. All right. So the, kind of the nuts and bolts of what's being asked of the city. Taxes and finance, together you get tax increment financing. It's a method of financing environmental cleanup activities. Tax increment financing is not just used for brownfields. As you may know, we have a DDA here in Pleasant Ridge that also uses tax increment financing as a way of capturing funds that are generated in our DDA district that have been used within the DDA district to make improvements. So it's a tool that's used for many different applications. In this instance, it's for a brownfield redevelopment plan. So whenever you have a tax increment financing district, there's always a purpose and an end date for when that tax capture ends. So what happens is you capture new value that's created in the district or on the property that is a result of the development activities that occur there. It's a way to reimburse the developer for qualified environmental cleanup costs. So just as a real kind of basic overview, let's assume you have a property that's worth $100 right now that has environmental issues, and that's its taxable value today. And on that $100, the city captures $10 a year in taxes. So after development occurs, the property has a value of $500. So this is your increment. This is what the property becomes worth after development. And so when you set up a tax increment financing district, the new $40 of taxes that are generated by this are captured by the developer and that's used to repay them for the environmental cleanup activities that they, that they conducted on the site. The $10 that was generated on this pre-development value of the site continues to get collected by the city. So then this money is collected by the developer for a set period of time. And then once that's paid off at some point over here in the future, then the city starts collecting all $50 of tax revenue every year. So really, this is best kind of described as an investment by the city in supporting value creation that at some future date will create a better future and a better fiscal outcome for the city. So per brownfield enabling legislation, tax capture can occur for up to 30 years. Usually it's between 20 and 30 years for when brownfields are approved. When you start getting in that 20 to 30 year range for capturing taxes to repay a project, it kind of shows you that, you know, this is a project that, I don't mean, this isn't to demean this project, but financially, it's, it's maybe a little marginal, you know, for in terms of the returns that that would generate. So you actually need kind of a invested developer who's, who's not just looking for a quick turn of burn, but who's in it, you know, for the, for other reasons. From the city's perspective, what we need to do is make sure that the brownfield incentive that we're offering is, that meets the, the but for test. If, if it's not for this incentive that we offer, that the developer can capture these taxes to repay them for eligible activities, would the project occur? And in some cases, the project would occur anyways, even if the city doesn't reimburse the developer. And in that case, it can become a giveaway. So it's just lining the developer's pockets because they were going to make a substantial or a sufficient return on the project anyways to make it go. What we need to make sure is to investigate the financials and make sure that if, if we don't offer that incentive, that the project probably doesn't go. So making sure that this financial incentive that we offer is the thing that makes it worthwhile for the developer to do, so that we get the benefits of better development and a cleaned up site and getting this environmental liability, you know, out of the ground and out of our town. So we talked about the but for test, how do you, how do you measure that? Well, one thing that the state does, whether it's the MEDC or the DEQ, and because the development team actually alluded to this, but there's two parts to the TIP capture. There's the local taxes, which what we approve. So that's 21.5 mils, more or less that we offer, that we levy right now. There's also school tax capture, which is almost equal to our capture. And school tax capture has to be approved by the state. So once we approve the local plan, this also has to go to the DEQ and MEDC. And they have their own spreadsheets, they have their own pro formas that they require applicants to fill out. We use those same ones. Because you can do cash on cash return, you can look at the internal rate of return in those developments. And they're, they're, you know, sort of, you know, when you're looking at those numbers, this project has an internal rate of return on that spreadsheet of about 7%. That's with the incentives at 7%. That shows you that from experience, just looking at these brownfield projects, you know, in, in various cities through my career, that's, that's on the lower side for return. So that, that's an indication that this project needs the subsidy in order for it to go. And, you know, that's just my comment as, as staff having looked at this, but that really is the, the test that we use when bringing this forward and even recommending that the city commission consider this. So that's on the financial side. Before I move on, are there any questions on sort of the mechanics of brownfield financing or the but for test? I know that's pretty quick and this is all new, so I want to make sure that we don't run out ahead of you, but any thoughts, questions on that? Okay. On the process, we've already talked a little bit about how the site's located in both Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale. Ferndale has their own brownfield authority, they could approve the plan locally, but we've met with Ferndale staff and with Oakland County staff, with state staff. Dan Goff is here from the DEQ, he's been part of this project review from the beginning. And we decided that the easiest way to go forward with this will be to have the Oakland County Brownfield Authority approve the two plans for the site. So basically Ferndale will defer to Oakland County on this, so then Oakland County can manage the tax capture and the reimbursement from the developer from both Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale. You've got one entity doing that, it streamlines things. What we have to do is pass a resolution that concurs with the developer's brownfield plan. A copy of that plan is in your packet. We've gone through a review with our brownfield consultant from Asti Environmental. We've sent comments back to the developer, they're in the process of revising the plan. So we'll have a revised plan to you, along with a recommendation from our brownfield consultant on that plan. Once we're comfortable with that, then we'll pass a resolution that authorizes Oakland County's brownfield authority to approve and implement the plan. And we'll have some certain items in the resolution that kind of direct Oakland County how to handle some of the elements of the plan. Because there's, there's choices that you can make in how you set these plans up. So we've got some recommendations on those. And in fact, the first review memo from Tom Wackerman at Asti is also in your packet. So that's the end of my presentation on the process. We wanted to bring this to you tonight to introduce it to you. It's a, you know, it's a substantial project and it's kind of a milestone, you know, thing in the history of our city. This could really kind of transform the very east edge of our city. So it's certainly not without consequence, this decision, when we're pledging our taxes to support the cleanup and the development over there. So the plan is for the developer to come back in May at the May 9 meeting, assuming they can get all of their i's dotted and t's crossed and get things back to us. And then we would have had that resolution before you at the May 9 meeting. So again, any interested residents who have been following this at home, all the information's in the city commission packet, if you're interested in looking at it. With that, I'd be happy to answer any remaining questions that you have.
Mr. Mayor, a couple? A couple of interesting points or important points for me, because this was a learning experience for me, my first experience with basically TIP district. So basically, as the taxable value for this property increases, the increased tax revenue is what would go back to the developer to help repay their incurred expenses for remediating all of these environmental hazards. So no money's coming out of the city budget. We're not giving them any money to do this. It's basically stuff that we wouldn't even have, like you said, the but for test, without this investment happening. So that's an important point for me, something that was a learning experience for me along this way. So then you also made a point that at the end of this term, whether it be 25, 26 years, all this increased taxable values revenue now is going to immediately come to the city from that point forward. So we're assuming that throughout that time, the taxable value has been steadily increasing because that's the only way the developer's going to get their money back. So I'm leading now to a question, is there a risk that this couldn't happen? And then what would happen if perhaps the taxable value did not increase to the level that is needed to repay that amount that was incurred for remediating all of this? And if there is risk, who is that risk weighing upon?
So the risk to the city is, is very manageable because we're not, again, fronting anything. The way that we would approve or we would recommend that we pass the resolution is that we approve a brownfield plan for X number of years and not to exceed X dollars. And those will be based on the developer's brownfield plan that they bring forward and the numbers that are in there. So then what happens is if the tax capture isn't as much as they projected, it still ends at year X. So I think 26 years is what was in the preliminary, the first draft of the table. So, you know, if they think that they're going to capture $2.4 million over 26 years and they actually only capture $2.1 million over 26 years, it still ends at 26 years. And again, the city is fronted nothing, pays nothing. So that, that is how you manage that risk. There's other risks, you know, non-payment of taxes. So there's a repayment agreement that the county does with the developer. And so there's a, I've confirmed this with the county, but in all of their payback agreements, if there's non-payment of taxes, then it ends. The tax capture ends and there may even be a clawback provision, but I'm not sure about that. But, you know, that's, that's a protection for non-payment of taxes. So, you know, communities have dealt with all of these issues and the repayment agreement, that's another benefit using the county because they aggregate everything. Yes, those are very real concerns.
And I ask a question, not to sound pessimistic by any stretch of it, I'm very excited about the project and I really see a bright future for it, but I'm just trying to play devil's advocate and ask all sides of the question. So that was really all I had. Thank you very much.
Mayor, and the reason that they capture and not an abatement is because they actually pay their taxes and there's some return?
Right. You know, sometimes a tax abatement versus a tax recapture, they're fungible. You, there's, you can do abatements, we can't because in a lot of cases, we can't use the abatement tools because we're not a core community. So that's not even something that was on the table for us to look at. But we looked at that, we looked at all the options for how to package all of this stuff. And at the end of the day, not being a core community really limits us down and the available tools for Pleasant Ridge.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Look forward to continuing this.
This is exciting.
This is exciting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking it on.
Thank you. Is there a purely, just a fun question? Is there an Iron Ridge logo or something that, as a sign of solidarity?
There will be. There will be.
We have a logo for the marketplace, the logo for the district. We've tapped another, a couple other businesses over there to be ambassadors and come up with it together. You know, we, we don't want to be a possessive developer, we want to be an inclusive part of what's going on over there. So I think it's going to happen organically. And it might, it might not be a logo, it might be just a feeling or a theme, it might be art, it might be flags, it might be colors. It could be a lot of different things.
Yeah. Cool.
Could be fun to have a line painted down the middle of Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale to sort of show where, where you are.
Yeah, that's actually a great idea. The Great Divide, right?
I saw it on Pinterest.
Aren't we all one big happy?
We are. Yes. Within Iron Ridge.
Okay. Thanks. The next item is city taxable value and headly rollback discussion.
Yes.
Stay on the theme of finances. Yes, right. So this is, you know, we're entering budget season and one of the things that we often hear, and this is, you know, always hard to get your head wrapped around, but one of the things, you know, that we hear is like, property values in Pleasant Ridge are clearly going up very quickly. We're seeing a lot of growth in what houses are selling for. It kind of boggles your mind sometimes when you see what they're selling for. And so, you know, there's a perception that, oh, well, Jesus, the city must be doing great. When in fact, we're not doing great, we're, we're sort of treading water and that's just because the state of Michigan has set up a municipal financing system that ensures that during these times of property value growth, cities don't really benefit that much more than whatever the rate of inflation is in any particular year. So this is nothing more than just explaining kind of where we're at. We've gotten our taxable values from Oakland County and we've gotten our millage rollback figures for how much our millage rates are going down that residents pay. So this is the beginning part of the budget process where we start to input revenues into the budget. And we'll be going and dealing with some of the expenditures here in upcoming months, but this is a good time to take stock of where we are and what's happening. So this is the property value trend over time. You see the very clear impact, the, I gotta get rid of the microphone here. The orange line is assessed value and then the blue line is taxable value. And we'll talk about what assessed and taxable values mean in a second, but you can very clearly see what happened in 2008 down through 2010, 2011. And then assessed value's kind of bottomed out and then boom, you know, they've had really great growth the past few years. In 2016 to 2017, we had assessed value growth of 6%. Taxable value grows much slower and there's a reason for that, it's limited by the state and that grew at 3.9%. And this year, the state also limits what the city's tax revenue increase can be, and that's 0.9%. So even though home values were up on average or property values were up 6%, and the taxable value in the city went up 3.9%, we can, we're only going to see a 0.9% increase in our tax revenue. So why is that? Well, the Headley Amendment passed in 1978 limits the total city property tax revenue growth to the rate of inflation or 5%, whichever is less. And there's a calculation done every year. This past year, that was that 0.9% property tax revenue limit. So the property tax formula, you know, how much do you pay for your house on property taxes? It's the taxable value of your house times the millage rate and then, and then you actually divide the millage rate by 1,000 and that gets you any property tax bill. So what happens in this case is when taxable value grew at 3.9%, but our revenues can only grow at 0.9%, something has to happen in this equation to balance out that growth. And what happens is by the Headley Amendment, this millage rate must go down. So the property tax rate for the city is decreased. You can see the effectiveness. This is city tax rate, this isn't your total tax rate that you pay. That's based on what all of the outside jurisdictions, the county, the school district, what all of those various entities levy for taxes. But for the city, in 2015, you paid 22.5595 mils. In 2016, that was reduced to 21.96 mils. And then in 2017, that's reduced again to 21.56 mils. So if you've lived here for the last two years, you're actually paying a mil less to the city in property taxes. And you can even see the original amount here when these various taxes were authorized. This was the original authorized amount, this is what it is today. So by charter, by state law, every city can levy up to 20 mils. We can only levy up to 10.62 because over time, we've lost nearly half of our mils that we can levy. And you can see that effect down through all of these lines. Again, for emphasis. A proposed lay came in 1994 and added another layer to the cake where you have assessed value and taxable value. And assessed value is based on the market value of your home. The county assessor comes in, looks at all the properties in town, does an analysis and says, okay, your, your house, if it was to sell right now, would be worth, we estimate this. And then the assessed value is set at 50% of the market value of your home. Taxable value, on the other hand, is set in the year that you buy your house. And then after that, it can only increase at the rate of inflation. Assessed value, which has, assessed value has no impact on the taxes you pay for, for the city, that grows unlimited. It's simply a It's simply a market reflection. So what happens over time is there will be a gap between assessed value and taxable value, which we saw in that first graph. And then when there's another transfer, so you bought your house in 1999, and you lived there for 17 years, and then you sold your house in 2016. In 1999, the taxable value was set at that 1999 level, and then the taxable value grew slowly, while the assessed value grew faster. When you sell your house in 2016, and, you know, the new assessed value is $400,000, and the taxable value is $400,000, the taxable value becomes uncapped, and it pops up where the taxable value equals the assessed value. So that, if you're wondering in that first graph, well, how does taxable value grow faster than the rate of inflation? This is how. It's the impact of those home sales you have every year, causing the taxable value to grow faster. For all the residents who live here, this year, your taxable value grew 0.9%. For everyone else, for people who sold their homes, it actually grew much faster. So to demonstrate this, this is the notice of assessment that everybody gets every January, and this is actually for my house. But this is what the county sends you that shows you what your assessed value is, how much that changed, what the taxable value is, how much that changed. This is for a cap value, we didn't buy or sell our house in the past year. So zooming in on it, and these numbers are a little hard, I tried to pull it up as much as I could, but you can see that right here, in this line, it says there was or was not a transfer of ownership in the property in 2016. Was not, we lived there the whole year. So the next step is this table. This is your prior year amount, 2016, so the taxable value, and you see there was $111,480, and that increased $1,000, so the new taxable value is $112,480. And that's a 0.9% increase, that rate of inflation. Assessed value, on the other hand, went from $165,000 to $178,000, an increase of $13,000. That was an increase of, I think, 7.8%. So that's a market rate reflection. So the taxes are paid on this $112,000 amount, this doesn't matter, the assessed value. Okay, 8.1%. 0.9%. So you can see what actually happened is that in 2016, my household paid $2,448 in taxes to the city, and in 2017, we will pay $2,426 to the city. That's a $22 reduction. We're actually going to pay less in taxes this year than we did last year. And the reason for that is the millage rollback. So this is an example of an uncapped property, this is one of my neighbors. And we can see what happened here. So there was a transfer of ownership in 2016. So when you look at the table, the prior year taxable value is $92,500, the assessed value was $130,540. And then you see what happens is here, the new assessed value is $140,580, she's really testing my eyes. And the new taxable value is $140,580. So that's a $40,000 increase in taxable value. So that's a 7.7% growth in assessed value, and a 52% growth in taxable value, simply because you had somebody new buy the house and that popped up. So for my neighbors, they paid $2,031 in taxes in 2016, and this coming year, in 2017, they're going to pay $3,032. So they saw a $1,001 increase for what they paid versus the people who lived there before them. So that, right there, causes a lot of new revenue to the city. That pop-up causes taxable value growth of 3.9%, whereas we're limited to only 0.9% growth in tax revenue. And that's what drives the reduction in the millage rate. So if you're a resident and you've lived here for one year, two years, three years, four years, and one of your neighbors buys a house, make them a pan of brownies, because they're lowering your taxes, what you pay. So again...
Exactly.
So that's the impact of home sales, and that's the impact for why our millage rate gets rolled down every year. So again, another way of putting it, taxable value grew 3.9%, assessed value grew 6%. For the people who bought, these were the 91 homes that sold in Pleasant Ridge. And I won't say 91 homes sold, if you do substantial renovations, if you add on to your house, that new addition is counted as new tax revenue. So your property doesn't pop up to the total assessed value, but the value of that addition is added to your taxable value. So that increase causes some of the rollback as well. But let's say the people who bought or sold a home, and the people who made a very substantial renovation to their home, they saw a 47.7% increase in taxable value. So everybody else in the city saw a 0.7% increase in taxable value. Why is that not 0.9? Some homes go before the tax tribunal and actually get the value of their home lowered. So those reductions by the tax tribunal pushed that total for everyone who didn't sell their house down a little bit. So that explains that number. So 91, and again, okay, so here's our percentages. So our millage rate was reduced 1.8%. So if you've lived here, it's a calculation, it's easy to do, you've lived here, your taxable value went up 0.9%, your millage rate went down 1.8%. Guess what? You're paying less in taxes this year. The average is $29 that our resident will pay this year. The average of what a resident who's lived here for two years versus two years ago will pay, the average is $90 less than you did two years ago. So these reductions add up over time. 91.9, 92% of our residents are going to pay less tax this year than they did last year. When I say less tax, I am talking only to the city. Ferndale did their sinking fund, right? So that added 1.3 mills to your tax rate. All of the other taxing jurisdictions are rolled back as well. The zoo, the county, the art authority, SMART, all of those get rolled back to some greater or lesser extent. So what's the total impact on the tax bill? That's beyond what we can control here in the city, but their average reduction is $29 less to the city is what you're paying us to do what we do here. So again, the key takeaway is assessed value growth has been strong, but taxable value grows faster than inflation due to these home sales. So the millage rate gets reduced to ensure that the city does not see any property tax revenue growth more than the rate of inflation. And what happens is most residents end up paying, end up paying less property tax to the city than they did the year before. And over time, that adds up to big reductions, all because of new people moving into town. So, you know, somebody says, man, things are going great, the city must be rich. Not much. So that's kind of the broad story on revenue and what we're going to be seeing going forward this year as we get into the budget. You know, this is just something that is not a fun topic, it's, you know, a little complex, the way the state set it up. So we'd just like to go through a refresher on this from time to time to make sure that we have informed constituents, who know, you know, what's happening with the city and how we're being funded and kind of what our constraints are. So I'd be up to answer any commission questions. I know you've been through this presentation about six times probably in the last four years, but...
I love it every time.
Good idea.
It's so depressing, but it's...
So Jim, this becomes the biggest problem when taxable values go down, because our millage rate is down, and nothing brings it back up to compensate. It only goes down if things are really good.
That's right. That was the biggest problem during the recession, is when you can only grow equal to the rate of inflation, but you can decrease at an unlimited level. So a lot of cities, it's like a stair step, right? So a lot of cities went down three steps, but they can't go back up three steps, they're stuck three steps down, because property values went down so much. When it was only Headley, so from 1978 until 1994, Headley actually allowed you to roll your millage rate up, when you, to ensure that your property tax revenue went at the rate of inflation. But when Prop A came in and set that individual growth, it also, Prop A also eliminated the roll up provision. So Prop A does two things. It's great, because it, on an individual property owner level, it's good, because it prevents people from getting gentrified out of their houses by setting a taxable value increase. But by not addressing the whole pop-up issue, and by eliminating the ability for cities to roll their tax rate up, there's always recessions, there's always downturns. So over any sufficiently long period of time, the city's going to continually ratchet down the staircase and create financial stress. So what Prop A did is ensured that there's going to be a string of city, township, other taxing entity requests of the people to approve new millages, to approve new Headley overrides, just to keep our funding revenues. And it's, you know, the other part of this coin is when the state has cut revenue sharing over the years. In inflation-adjusted terms, we used to get $600,000 a year in revenue sharing in current year dollars back in 1987. It's down to $240,000 a year now. So, you know, we've been stressed from multiple fronts, and it's a reality that we have to live with, but, you know, there's been a lot of cans that have been kicked down the stairs from state level to local level.
And one of the fortunate communities whose property values have recovered by and large since 2008.
That's correct. We suffered far less than most communities did during the downturn. Our property values have done very well. We're one of the very few communities now where our taxable value actually exceeds what it did in 2008, barely. But, you know, if you game that out, we've still lost a lot in terms, and that's why we had to do the millages in 2014.
Exactly.
Just to keep up with inflation. So yes, we are fortunate, and there's far many other communities who suffer with this problem far more than we do, but it still affects us.
Any other questions, comments for Jim? Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. Okay, then you're on again. City manager's report, you got anything left?
Norwich is underway, the reconstruction project. They made some great progress already in two days. You've probably noticed there's some cars parked on Ridge. That's just a side effect of the construction project and residents not being able to get to their homes. So we've allowed temporarily for cars to park on Ridge. It's going to cause some congestion and some friction there, but, you know, it's a construction project, so we found the open, and there are many alternate routes that residents can use to get around the Ridge problem. And I hope the non-residents who seem annoyed by this project, just from watching them drive the past couple days, hopefully they'll get the idea and start to take some alternate routes as well. Instead of turning in at Millington, keep going over and down a few blocks, you know, maybe go that way. But we're happy about that, and I don't know that I have much else right now by way of home in Portland, please.
Okay, great. Any other questions for the city manager? Move on to other business.
Mr. Mayor, I have one quick item. In my talking about that survey for giving our feedback on what we're looking for in the superintendent's hiring, I neglected to give the link. We'll have that posted in the YouTube video in the description section, but it's surveymonkey.com/theletterR/ferndale2017. And again, that'll be posted in the description of the YouTube video for later reference.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, I took the survey and found it quite thought-provoking. I thought it was very interesting, talking about issues around empathy and a lot, I mean, a lot of the issues that they asked about, I hadn't even thought that you would think about that for a superintendent's. But I found that I was answering a lot of the questions thinking about Lake Pruitt, because I thought very highly of Pruitt. So a lot of it was trying to kind of reflect what I saw in him.
They weren't just 10,000-foot view?
No, no.
Just very general questions.
It was a really interesting survey. Sir, I know you've got something.
Well, I just have the book club for May. It's the residents, and this was actually written at the concluding years of the Obama presidency, so there may be a sequel coming up, but this is Inside the Private World of the White House. It's written by Kate Anderson Brower. This goes back several years, it's not a complete history of life in the White House, but it's kind of a behind-the-scenes look at what goes on in the White House with the First Family. And it should be very interesting. That will be Wednesday, May 10th, it's the second Wednesday. At, we're gonna try out the new chairs at Gainsborough. I know they've gotten a lot of attention of late, this past weekend was beautiful, a great meeting area there in Gainsborough. So the book club's going to try it out in Gainsborough Park, Wednesday, May 10th, to discuss the residents. So if you're interested, and you're in the neighborhood, please stop in and join us. Thank you.
Please watch your language and your behavior.
No loud music.
We're heckling that fashion.
No, heckling from the book club.
Just to let people know, qualifying petitions for mayor and city commission, which will be up in November, will be available April 27th, and then they're due back July 25th by 4 o'clock. So anybody has any interest, those petitions will be available to pick up.
Are you writing a doubt?
April 27th.
Will be available April 27th.
I do, I have two quick things. This Saturday is the Women's Club Annual Brunch, and it is a fundraiser for scholarships that they give to students within our school district area, and it's one of my very favorite fundraisers. It's a lovely, it's a lovely brunch, it's 11:00 AM on Saturday. If you can't make it, they still will take donations made out to the Pleasant Ridge Women's Club. And tickets are at a premium, so, you know what, send me an email at aperry@cityofpleasantridge.org if you want a ticket in the next day or two, because it's really tight. And then also, on April 22nd, the Ridge Resale will be open for, they will be selling as well as collecting donations. So they're open from what, I think it's 9:00 AM till 1:00. And it's best to park at the end of Amherst in the parking lot. But they, I saw them setting up last weekend, and they've got some gangbuster stuff, man, it's really nice. So make sure to donate or go buy stuff at the Ridge Resale. Thanks, that's it.
Well, instead of talking about the future, I have a couple, just a couple of things from the past that were education-related that I just wanted to bring to people's attention, and also, was also to give Keith an idea for who we need to get at the auction. The first one was Ferndale Youth Assistance, which Pleasant Ridge contributes $1,000 every year. Rob was there, we, every year we go to the Ferndale Youth Assistance, they have awards. We're teachers of nominated children, one guy, I mean, just for various things, for doing good work, doing good work in the school, doing good work in the community. And, you know, the whole idea is to keep children out of trouble and help them succeed in school. One child was recognized, sitting at our table was recognized for teaching kids chess at lunch and after school. And then a brother and sister were given, were nominated for an award because they helped a woman who was stuck in the median on Nine Mile Road in front of the Western Market, and they both went and helped her come back across the street when they were nominated for an award. But it was those kinds of, very heartwarming, and it's sponsored by Jack Aronoff, who had sold Garden Fresh to Campbell's and is tremendously involved in education, especially with the schools. He's the one you need, because he also, he also showed up at the Ferndale Education Foundation fundraiser, and I understood he outbid everybody on the silent auction to the point where nobody could meet his number. So he, alone sponsored a great deal. But what I was told by Barb Landry, I was the master of ceremonies, because the other master of ceremonies had an upper respiratory infection, but really, really, I turned it over to Saban from the bingo up in, 555 Bingo up in Royal Oak, if you haven't been there. So he, she took care of the auction itself, but it, I talked to Barb Landry, who is the organizer of it, and she said that this is getting money to award teachers. Teachers come up with ideas for projects for students, they want additional materials, they want to take them on field trips. And she said that they have received $18,000 worth of requests. And this year, the event was held up in the community center, which was just done beautifully. I mean, it was amazing how the community center was turned into this evening's activities. And Barb told me the other day that they made 20, they earned $20,000, so they will be able to cover all the requests and still have some money left over, so it was very successful. And I think by virtue of not having to spend quite as much money for a venue, it was, they were able to save a lot of money. And Jack Aronoff. So are there any other issues? If that's all for me. If I have a motion to adjourn?
So must.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.